Trustees and Mayor of the Village of Burr Ridge for Monday, April 14, 2025. Tonight, we have present from Downers Grove PAC 89, the Cub Scouts PAC 89 graciously here. Thank you, Trustees Giappa, and they're going to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of the EJPS or the Boy Scout Pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you. The Boy Scout to my left wondered if we were going to do the Boy Scout pledge. You guys, you'll get to that. Okay. Joe, Trustee Snyder gave proper notice. He is on business in Florida and is calling in. I need a motion for Joe to attend the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Joe, are you on?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Welcome, welcome. Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Trustee Francis.
Here.
Trustee Giappa.
Here.
Trustee Pavezza.
Here.
Trustee Snyder.
Yes.
Trustee Matal is out. Trustee Smith.
Here.
Mayor Grasso.
Here. And Trustee Matal gave us notice that she'd be traveling, unable to attend, but I believe she's with visiting family in India. Okay, that takes us to item three, it being... It being 6:32 PM, I call to order the public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 budget. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on the 2026 fiscal year budget? Is there anyone here who would like to speak on the fiscal year 2026 budget? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 budget?
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion by the trustees?
None.
Any discussion from anybody in the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Francis.
Yes.
Trustee Snyder.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Giappa.
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza.
Yes.
Five zero, the motion passes. The public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 budget is closed. All right, that takes us to the consent agenda. An item shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any one trustee or anyone present at the meeting. Those items marked with an asterisk are considered to be on the consent agenda. A roll call shall be taken on the approval of the consent agenda and recorded in the minutes as an omnibus vote. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be discussed by the board, open for public comment, and voted upon during this meeting. Minutes, A, approval of a regular board meeting, minutes of March 10, 2025. B, receive and file Plan Commission meeting of April 7, 2025. Six, ordinances, C, approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution of a vacant real estate purchase contract for the purchase of 341 Shore Drive in the village of Burr Ridge, Illinois. D, approval of an ordinance granting special use amendment to ordinance A, 834-0219, and ordinance A, 834-0124, a special use for automobile sales and outdoor overnight storage of retail vehicles, eliminating the requirement of a fence around the southeast boundary of the property, ZO3 2025-60 Shore Drive, Nadaf, and Coda Motors LLC. Seven, resolutions approving approval of a resolution granting a third extension of subdivision completion deadline, 7950 Drew Avenue, cottages of Drew. B, approval of a proclamation celebrating Arbor Day week. Eight, considerations, D, approval of award of contract for landscaping enhancement along 79th Street Pedestrian Improvements Project. Two, Clarence Davids &amp; Company of Plainfield, Illinois, in the amount of $35,968. E, approval of renewal of contract for street sweeping services with LRS Clean Sweep of West Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $40,000. F, approval of renewal of contract for cleaning and janitorial services with Best Quality Cleaning of Franklin Park, Illinois, in the amount of $46,500. G, approval of authorization to accept new leased vehicles from Enterprise. H, approval of vendor list dated March 24, 2025, for fiscal year 2025, in the amount of $464,444.30, excuse me, $73 cents for all funds, plus $488,065.74 for payroll periods ending March 1 and March 15, 2025, for a grand total of $942,510.47. And I, approval of vendor list dated April 14, 2025, for the fiscal year 2025, in the amount of $211,793.42 for all funds, plus $234,382.38 for the payroll period ending March 29, 2025, for the grand total of $446,175.80. With that, can I get a motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda? Five, A and B, six, C and D, seven, A and B, eight, D, E, F, G, H, and I.
So moved.
So moved.
Joe will take that as a second. We have a movement and a second. Any discussion by the trustees? Any public discussion on the consent agenda items? Roll call, please.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Francis.
Yes.
Trustee Giappa.
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza.
Yes.
Trustee Snyder.
Yes.
Five zero.
Five zero, the motion passes. Takes us to ordinances, A, consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for all corporate purposes for the village of Burr Ridge, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois, for the fiscal year commencing on May 1, 2025, and ending on April 30, 2026. Evan?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the final step in our budget process. This is the fiscal year 2026 adoption ordinance. This is now a policy once approved. As has been discussed, we cannot accept any changes at this time. If there are amendments to be made, we'll make them every quarter going forward. As usual, both the FY '25 and '26 budgets are balanced, meaning there's more revenue than expenditures. This is the sixth consecutive year without a property tax increase, and the village remains debt-free. I'll be here and answer any questions.
Okay, first, can I get a motion, and then we'll have discussion if there's any. Can I get a motion to approve an ordinance adopting the budget for all corporate purposes of the village of Burr Ridge, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois, for the fiscal year commencing on May 1, 2025, and ending on April 30, 2026?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion by the trustees? Any discussion by the public? Any comment or discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Giappa.
Yes.
Trustee Francis.
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza.
Yes.
Trustee Snyder.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Five zero.
Five zero, the motion passes. Thank you all for all the hard work that the staff put in. Evan, you know we just won the award again for the manner in which we run this village fiscally. So, another kudos, we'll take that at another time. But again, all of our appreciation to the staff, Anne Marie, others, to get this budget done.
Thank you.
Ordinance, that takes us to six, B, consideration of an ordinance amending Section 2509 of Chapter 25 entitled Liquor Control of the Burr Ridge Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mayor. So as is our custom, liquor code amendments are open for discussion. Your attached ordinance reduces one Class O liquor license by one, this is peak running, voluntarily surrendered. They used to have a small keg in the back of their store just to serve customers, but they voluntarily surrendered that. It increases the Class H liquor license quantity by one, that's Sticks &amp; Stones, who was previously sold to a new owner this past year, is electing to apply for a liquor license again this coming year. There's also a like-for-like subtraction of one, and the addition back at Crown Plaza to account for an ownership change. They were recently in receivership, meaning that they were owned by the court, for lack of a better word, and that has been accounted for in this ordinance as well.
Okay, well, does this mean that we will be approving the transfers of these licenses?
It means that you'll be creating the opportunity for the liquor commissioner to sign them, should he find that the applications are thorough and complete.
So they're just there for your decision?
Correct.
Tony's decision, okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 2509 of Chapter 25 entitled Liquor Control of the Burr Ridge Municipal Code?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any comment or discussion from the trustees?
None from me.
Any com... Did Joe say something? Any comment or discussion from the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza.
Yes.
Trustee Snyder.
Yes.
Trustee Francis.
Yes.
Trustee Giappa.
Yes.
Five zero.
Five zero, the motion passes. That takes us to considerations, eight, A, consideration of a Plan Commission recommendation to deny a variation for outdoor equipment storage, VO1 2025 Oak Creek Club subdivision. Good evening, Janine.
Good evening, everyone. V01 2025, as you said, concerns a case, it's a variation, a request to store an additional snowplow equipment piece at the Oak Creek Club subdivision. On February 3, the Plan Commission held a public hearing on the request. Ken Corello of the Oak Creek Club HOA is the petitioner in this case. Back in 2020, Oak Creek Club was approved for one piece of snowplow equipment to be parked in a guest spot at the subdivision. The petitioner is now requesting to add an additional piece of snowplow removal equipment. Public comments were received in support of and in objection to the request. The Plan Commission determined that this request was not due to a hardship posed by the land, and that it could be broadly applicable to other subdivisions who have private roads or are privately gated. They did recommend unanimous denial of the request. I am here to take questions. We also have Commissioner Stratus in the back there. I believe the petitioner is here tonight, and there may be people who wish to speak as well.
Okay, so let's give the petitioner an opportunity to speak, if he or she wishes to do those, do so. But Mr. Corello, Ken, are you here? And do you wish to speak?
As you know, the Oak Creek Club is a gated community, and the Homeowners Association Board of Directors takes the responsibility for maintenance of all of the property and the infrastructure of the property. We are responsible for maintenance and replacement, or repairs of roads and everything else. The property is approximately 24 acres of fairly winding and hilly contours. It's the areas comprised of 63 large townhomes that are predominantly occupied by a senior population. I think there are less than five children in the whole community. And many of them have, you know, doctors' needs, home health care, and, you know, need to have access and address to their property at all times. The Oak Creek Club in 2024 changed both their Guards Service and Snow Plowing Service. They were affiliated organization between the Guards and the Snow Plowing Service. We were not satisfied with either of those services, and so we put out RFPs for five different proposals for the Snow Plowing Service and the Guards Services. We decided to go with our landscapers as a Snow Plowing Service, King Landscape Maintenance and Design. The cost to do this was approximately $10,000 a year more than what we were previously paying, but we weren't satisfied with the previous service, so we decided, you know, since it was a competitive bid with the others that we received, to go with King Landscaping and Design. We notified King Landscape and Design that we had previously received a variance to allow for a snowcat to be parked in a location A is designated on the map, which was an area that's surrounded by pine trees, it's not really part or located in any of the cul-de-sacs, it's on the main road of Oak Creek Drive. The new provider for service for landscape, King, without notifying us, brought a second snowcat into the property, feeling that's that was what was necessary to manage the property in the event of a heavy snowfall. We didn't question it. One of our homeowners, who had previously objected to the first snowplow being, or snowcat, as we refer to them, being put on a property, also objected to the second one. We then filed a petition to get a variance to our previous, or to get an amendment to our previous variance, to have the snowcat parked on the property to get the second. And that's where we are now. If there are any questions for me, I'd be more than happy.
So let me start with the trustees. Does anybody have any questions? Tony?
So with the new contractor, do you guys have a zero tolerance?
What do you mean, zero tolerance? This was his recommendations. He put two brand-new snowplows on the property, and he said in the event of a snowfall of six inches or more, that's what he would need to adequately maintain the property. First of all, with the push plows, there's only a limited number of places we could put the snow. With these, we can lift it up and put it over the banks in the guest parking area, and beyond the areas where we would not be able to just move it with a snowplow.
Okay. And I know association's been around for...
Thirty years, thirty-some years. And that was an objection that, you know, for the past previous 25 years, that the property had been maintained without the use of a snowcat. But, you know, 25 years ago, none of us carried cellphones for the most part, and the technology changes, and this is considered to be the state-of-the-art equipment for snow removal. Incidentally, we paid $30,000 for a snow contract this year, and I think they actually came out three times.
I was going to say.
So, and then we paid an additional, because we also, if we don't get two inches of snow, we paid an additional $8,000 to salt the property to make sure that the roads were adequately maintained this year.
All right, Ken, I'm sorry. Trustees Giappa, are you done?
Yeah, I'll do, thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
Question?
Yes.
Mr. Corello, have you already removed the piece of equipment? Because I saw somewhere in the paperwork, by April 1, the equipment is supposed to be removed from your association.
Yes, it's been removed.
Okay. I also have a question for Evan. Is there any other associations or any other properties that are allowed to hold snowplowing equipment like that? Like Lifetime, Village Center?
Residential property-wise, not that I'm aware of. I can't think of anything. Commercial properties would be different. I do know there are some facilities that have snow removal equipment on site.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, I have a couple. So what you're asking for, and what the Plan Commission unanimously said no to, is for you to park a second one of these?
Yes.
And given the history and what are recent winters, I mean, I just ran the gas out of my snow thrower over the weekend because I didn't use it much. I used it twice, I think, all winter also, and very little relative snow. So where is the need for a second one? I mean, I must say, where's the hardship? Why do you need this?
I think, you know, we can't consider what the next season is going to be based on previous seasons. As I said, we, if we would have known that there were going to be three snows in excess of two inches, we would have probably gone with a per-push contract, and wouldn't have had any plows or services on site. And then we, of course, would have been, you know, delayed services because of that. So it's like an insurance policy, is what it is.
Sure, understand, and no one can predict the weather, and of course, now that we've said this, we're going to have one of our worst snow seasons coming up.
Right. We all know what happened to Michael Belandick.
Yes, right. I do, I do remember that. So, but you would keep both of these parked outside all winter?
Yes, and if necessary, we'll park them in the same place, that is, you know, a secluded area with, on the main road of the property. None of the immediate residents has objected to it in the past.
And, and so...
And one of our board members is actually in the closest to it.
But why can't one snowcat, why can't one do the job as, where's the hardship of meeting, or where's the hardship of having only one?
Well, previously, they were using a snowcat and a snowplow. Our current vendor is looking at using snowcats only, and they will be on the property. Previous vendor had a snowcat on the property and would bring a snowplow in.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Could you just spell your last name, please?
It's C.U.R.E.L.O. First name, Ken.
I'm sorry, Trustee Francis has a question.
A few comments and questions. First of all, the needs you mentioned of your residents.
Yes.
Are the same needs of the residents in other subdivisions in this village, no different. Home health care, have to get out to doctor's appointments, need prescriptions, et cetera, no different, okay? So you guys aren't special, just like everybody else. I'd like to point out that the snow removal equipment, I don't park, I have a Bobcat, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Which is what these are.
That's just what these are, yes.
I don't park my Bobcat out for my neighbors to see, nor would I want one parked next to my home, okay? Why couldn't your, the landscape company, why couldn't they trailer the second one out there when they come out to do the snow removal operations? Then they have two, and they trailer one back.
He never asked or even proposed that as a solution.
Did we work on a solution?
I mean, because we immediately notified him after the hearing in front of the Planning Commission, and he took the snowcat out, the second one, the next day.
Well, but he brought it there without permission to begin with.
He did.
So, are you petting them back for that?
Well, it wasn't even our knowledge, he didn't even ask us, we didn't know. He probably didn't know that we were limited to one.
You didn't tell him in the RFP when you went out for a bit?
I told him that we had a snowcat on the property. I didn't say that that was the limit.
Okay, well, again, we're asking forgiveness here, right, as opposed to asking permission. I think a workable solution would be for your vendor to trailer one out there, the second one out there, and utilize the space that's already been granted for the first one, and that would work out. I'll also give some background, I plowed snow and did snow removal operations for 30-plus years, part-time, and I did it with a blade, I did it with a Bobcat. I did the Bobcat work after everything else was cleaned up with the blade. If I, if I, my piles are too high, I moved them with the Bobcat. So, I understand, but this is a convenience for your landscaper, not for the residents. Convenience for, now he doesn't have, he can store two Bobcats there, he doesn't have to pay to store them elsewhere, at his yard, right?
Well, he didn't even have to provide them. I mean, they are, these are two new Bobcats, you know what the cost of these vehicles are.
I understand, I understand, but he uses them in the summertime, too.
He probably will.
If he's a landscaper, I'm sure he will, he has one.
But I think he bought them for our property because they were brand-new.
That's fine. He had to buy them for somebody new, but anyway, it's a convenience for him, he doesn't have to pay storage costs in the wintertime for his, for these two machines. I think a viable solution would be him trailering the second one in. Thank you.
I'm not sure that wouldn't cost an additional charge.
It probably will. But, you know, that's the part, that's the, that's the reality of living in a gated community, where you maintain your own roads, and property, and driveways, and exteriors. That's, that's, that's part of the deal. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ken, I must say, I mean, you're, you're the president of the HOA, so no good deed goes unpunished. I understand that, and you have to do this, but I am curious that your landscaper, is your landscaper even here?
No, he did not.
Okay, and so I'm, I must say that your landscaper should have been the one here, certainly should be here tonight supporting. I do agree with Trustee Francis about now this is a situation where someone's asking for forgiveness, not permission. All of this was foreseeable. We have had light winters, that doesn't mean we won't have another, but if we do have a light winter, looks like one Bobcat will do it. If there's a particular heavy snow, then he must trailer another one or a plow at this point. I just don't think you've met the burden of a hardship, which is, which is the legal requirement, and I do agree with Trustee Francis that you're now, your landscapers put you in the position of asking for forgiveness for, for him, and I'd find it unfortunate that he's not even here to support you, so.
Well, you know, had, had it been requested, I would have probably asked him to come.
Yes, well...
He was supposed to come to the Planning Commission meeting. He was sick.
Okay. All the more reason why he might have wanted to be here tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, so anybody else have any questions at the trustees? Any of the trustees? Anybody from the public have any questions? Okay.
A woman just raised her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't see you. My apologies.
And I feel like David versus the wife here, and I will be brief.
A name, please?
Could you move the microphone?
Yeah, the microphone maybe might help.
Susan Sullivan. I'm a, I've been a resident in Oak Creek Club for over 30 years, and I will be brief. I believe that village code has been put into place for a reason, and that's to protect the residents and preserve a standard in the village. If there is to be a variance, it is incumbent upon the petitioner to detail a compelling argument for it. If the majority of the village residents, for example, want to drive 60 miles per hour past a school, that is not a reason to toss out the current speed limit. Oak Creek Club has been in existence since the late 80s. I have been a resident since 1992. In each of those years, there has been snow removal. Up until a few years ago, the removal was accomplished without a snowplow being parked within the community. A few years ago, a petition was made for a variance for one plow to be parked within only, within certain months. This past fall, full well knowing that an additional plow was a violation, violation of code, another one was parked, and in a location that was the most congested, and where the largest number of residents had it within their view. I have submitted photos that will attest that. The best reason given for another plow is safety. I submit that our community has been afforded safety for over 30 years without the eyesore of plows parked within it and oppose another plow. Even if the current residents do not oppose, the turnover in Oak Creek Club is pretty high. The selling price of units are not high, as I can evidence. The homeowners should be afforded every possible advantage to sell their units at a decent price. You would not want to take photos of Oak Creek Club, including plows, and include them in a publication citing Burr Ridge as a very special place. And I'm guessing you would not want to look at your front door or window and see a snowplow. I ask you to carefully consider this matter before you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Anyone else have a comment? Okay, and before I call for a motion, I do want to make one more comment, looking closely at these, at the pictures in the packet. As a father of six, five boys, and is now a grandfather of seven, with three, three boys and four girls, I understand there aren't many children at Oak Creek Club, but this certainly would be an attractive nuisance to play on. I know I would play on it when I was a boy, and I would, no of my sons would play on it when they were boys, and I know certainly one of my grandsons who would climb on it if he was allowed. So I don't see having two attractive nuisances under these circumstances with no hardship. I don't see that that's very good for the community either. So with that, can I get a motion to deny, to deny a variation for outdoor equipment storage, VO1 2025 Oak Creek Club subdivision?
For staff to prepare an ordinance.
And for, for staff to prepare an ordinance, denying the variation.
So moved.
I have a motion here... Have a motion here, a second there. Any further discussion by the trustees? Any discussion from the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Skiappa?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Did we lose Joe? Joe, I think you're on mute. Pass for now. Take the next one.
What was that, four?
Was that four?
Yeah, enough.
That's enough?
Yes.
Okay, four, and then we'll let Joe weigh in when we get him back. Four, nothing, the motion passes, which means the variation's denied. All right, B, consideration of a plan commission recommendation to approve a special use for outdoor dining, Z06 2025, 78 Burr Ridge Parkway, Patty's Sunrise. Janine?
Thank you, Mayor. On April 7th, the planning commission held a public hearing to review a request by Mike Garber of Patty's Sunrise Cafe. This was to amend his prior special use approval to permit outdoor dining at the restaurant year-round. Last year, the petitioner was approved for a special use for outdoor dining at Patty's Sunrise Cafe, but it was with a condition for one year only, so that will expire on May 13th of this year. The petitioner is now requesting to have outdoor dining permanently at the restaurant. There was one public comment received in support of the request, and the plan commission recommended unanimous approval of the request. Again, Commissioner Stratus is here tonight, and I can take any questions you might have, and I do see the petitioner's attorney is here.
The petitioner's attorney is here, but the petitioner isn't.
Correct.
Okay. Where do we stand with the Garbers' compliance with violations at the...
So as of...
Continuing violations over how many years? Where do we stand with the Garbers being good citizens in the village of Burr Ridge?
So as of today, we do not have any, I would say, active code enforcement issues at the property.
Good to hear.
There was a recent incident of tree removal, however, they have paid the fine that was associated with that and applied for the required permit.
Thank you, good to hear. All right. Any questions of the trustees? All right, let's get it, let's get the motion teed up first. Can I get a motion to direct staff to approve a special use for outdoor dining, Z06 2025, 78 Burr Ridge Parkway, Patty's Sunrise Cafe? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the trustees? Any discussion by the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Skiappa?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Still working on it.
He's still working on it, okay.
Four-zero.
That's still four.
That's still four-zero, right?
Yes.
Four-zero meets the quorum requirements, so four-zero, the motion passes, the special use is now approved without limitation.
I think there's still an ordinance needing to be prepared to be on the next agenda.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you for that. That takes us to HC, consideration of Mayor Grasso's, my recommendation to create the comprehensive plan update committee and to appoint trustee Guy Francis as chairperson of that committee before I get a motion. This has kind of been on our to-do list for some time. Guy's been a great champion of all of this, as several of the other trustees have been also. He, having the long, long experience being also on the plan commission, I mean, it's just a no-brainer to have Guy chair this. I did ask him first if he'd be willing to take it on. He did say yes. So this will get it going. I intend to, with Guy's assistance, appoint a committee and go from there, okay? So can I get a motion to approve the recommendation to create the comprehensive plan update committee and to appoint trustee Guy Francis as the chairperson?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the trustees? Yes.
Question?
Yes.
Am I allowed to vote on this, or should I abstain?
You can vote.
Vote present.
I don't see any problem with you voting.
Okay, thank you.
Correct?
Yeah, correct. You're not benefiting personally by this.
I just want to clarify that, thank you.
Far from. Any comment or questions from the public?
You mean he chairs another committee?
Yes. All right, do we have Joe back?
He's going to call back in.
Okay, but I think four-o still does it. So let's, was that a roll call, please?
Trustee Skiappa?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Five-zero.
Five-zero, the motion passes. Welcome back, Joe.
Sorry, I have a little phone just to call me.
Okay, all right.
I'm texting, I'm texting, just so you know, I was texting Evan my vote, just 'cause I couldn't talk.
Right, okay, all right. So that takes us to item nine on tonight's agenda, the public comments section. Is there any public comment? Okay, the record show no public comment. Reports and communications from village officials, trustee Metal isn't here yet, so who would like to kick it off? Trustee Smith?
Sure, I'd like to make the announcement that we are having our Armed Forces event Saturday, May 17th, starting at 10 o'clock, right outside this door here. Also, if you are interested, every year we have the Jack Shouse Award, which, that is for those folks that may or may not have served in the military, but certainly are passionate about taking care of our veterans. So that nomination would be, is due tomorrow to our clerk. So, thank you.
What time is it at?
10 o'clock, yep.
Okay, any, you're done?
That's it.
Okay, anybody else? Evan?
Thank you, just wanted to make an announcement. We did get a, I'll call it a public comment, from Commissioner Richard Morton. This is something the board, I believe, is already aware of regarding the issue of the word "handicapped" in our municipal code. He's requested that we begin an assessment of removing this language from our code, and I know the board has already directed me to do that, but that's more of an announcement for the community as much as follow-up to the board, but we are in process of making that happen and should be in an agenda in the near future.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
And that is something, you know, Rich Morton's been a longtime member of the community. I can tell you how respectfully he brought that up. He's passionate about it, as you would expect him to be, and it's the right thing to do. We're getting it done, you know, it's the right thing to do, and we're getting it done. Okay, I have, anybody else? I have a few announcements. Can you put my picture up? Just wanted to show you guys what a great place Burr Ridge is to live in, and a fortunate thing that I have at my home. Again, I didn't live in a Burr Ridge-type community growing up, and this just is great stuff to me. So indulge the mayor for a moment.
I was going to say, animals.
So, can you get it up there? So this is my, I feed the birds every morning, bring out three different types of feed, and more recently, we've been getting more and more deer. The other night, I had 10 in my backyard, but two of them particularly liked the bird feeder.
That photo, too?
And we have that one, yeah, there you go. There's, there was 10 of them back there a couple of nights ago. And I just think it's just one of the great things about living in Burr Ridge, that we have enough land and open space where 20 miles from downtown Chicago, people can have, residents can have in their backyards, you know, the deer showing up. It's good. I might put some deer food out, too, from time to time, so...
Put a salt lick out there.
Yeah, not quite a salt lick, but something else I find at, you know, one of the hunting places.
Did they get that big?
It's a shame they're hunted. I get people like to do that, but in my backyard, I like to see them run around, and again, it's a great thing about living in Burr Ridge. May 12th will be the new term. There'll be the swearing-in of the three trustees, trustee Francis, trustee Metal, trustee Smith, clerk, village clerk, Sue Shouse, and myself. Judge Pat Rogers, friend of mine, and many of you might know Patty, was in Western Springs for a long time, he's going to, he's going to do the honors and officiate, for those of you who want that. We have a light agenda, and we'll be adjourning for a beverage or two when that's over with. I'm not, we'll probably not have it right now, based on what I know is on the agenda, we probably won't meet on April 28th, so this could be, in fact, the last meeting, maybe?
Definitely maybe.
Definitely maybe, okay. Well, I'll take that as we're probably going to have an April 28th meeting. Something must have come up, so good for that. All right, so with that, from my rambling tonight, can I get a motion? Oh, let's do it with Joe, thank you. Joe, are you back?
Joe dropped again, he's having trouble.
He's dropped again?
No, basically.
Well, we'll...
Then in the minutes, the clerk should just indicate that he was technically, technologically, I can't say that word.
Technical difficulties.
Yeah, technical...
Technological difficulties prevented him from voting, unless he's back.
Joe?
Okay.
I would be closing.
Okay, so we'll see if there's, if he wants to make, or at least make a statement at the next meeting for whether or not he would have supported or not those two votes. We'll give him that opportunity later. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn to probably, definitely, maybe, April 28th, 2025, at 6:30 PM? So moved.
Second.
You guys like being here, huh? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Tony, thanks for bringing the Cub Scouts tonight, that was fun.
Yeah, thank you.